Can you hear me? Good evening, I'm Amy Botel.
And I'm Christina Chang.
On behalf of Lower Marion School District and Inner School Council, Christina and I would like to welcome you to the 2023 Lower Marion School District's School Board of School Directors Candidate Forum. We are live on Hariden TV and want to thank Hariden TV, thank Rachel Herman from Hariden TV for assisting us. Tonight's forum is organized by the Inner School Council in conjunction with Lower Marion and Hariden School Debate Team, right here, led by Mr. Mark Levy and with guidance from the League of Women Voters, Radner, and Committee of Seventy to ensure all the questions this evening are nonpartisan.
Additionally, we would like to thank the Committee for Special Education, the NAACP Mainline Branch, the district's Power and Beckton Scholars for their participation. Members of the Lower Marion and Hariden High School Debate Teams will be moderating this evening. The Inner School Council is a parent-guardian volunteer organization that connects the district's eleven home and school associations. The ISC hosts parent education events, hot topics every Tuesday, every second Tuesday of the month, and mini grant programs for educators. For more information, please write toisc.co-presidents@gmail.com or visit lmsd.org and find us under the Parent tab on the website. We thank all the candidates this evening for participating, especially given we are missing a pivotal Phillies playoff game tonight. This entire forum is being recorded and will be available on Hariden TV and shared out for those who cannot join us live. The recording must be shown in its entirety. Clips cannot be used for partisan political advantage. We want to remind people that the deadline for registering is fast approaching on October 23rd. If you are age eighteen, by November 7th, you get to vote. Your vote is your voice, your vote matters. Now I'll turn it over to the students.
Good evening, I'm Luke Shepherd and I, along with Margot Norman, Nathan Aronson, Oliver Nickerson, and Lauren Brunner.
All leaders of the Lower Marion and Hariden Speech and Debate Teams will serve as moderators toward the evening. Me here as Stargardt of the Lower Marion Speech and Debate Team will serve as the timekeeper. There are ten candidates who are running for five seats total for your terms, which will begin in December. Nine candidates are present tonight. We solicit questions from students, parents, and the community. Thank you for being involved. Questions forwarded with your submissions in mind and what issues do you want us to ask.
We would also like to thank the League of Women Voters, the Annual Latinkey, the Committee of Seventy, and the Beckton Scholars for helping us forward the questions. In addition to the moderators present, we would like to thank several other student organizations. Stanley O. L., Rachel Harmon, and Daniel Hsu, Berkeley of Lower Marion and Hariden Speech and Debate Teams, Rachel Murray and Danielle Son from the Beckton Scholars, Hariden High School Team, and Mr. Mark Levy, sponsor of the Lower Marion Speech and Debate Team. And LMSD's mission statement, diversity is the core value of love Lower Marion stands for, and how to be sure to tell that question from different perspectives is greatly appreciated.
The format of the evening will be as follows. Each candidate will have one opening court opening statement, which will be followed with eleven rounds of one question. Each question will be asked to four candidates and in the final round, five candidates will respond to one question. The order in which candidates share their opening statement and answer questions are all randomly pre-assigned. Responses will be limited to ninety seconds. Candidates will be made aware of the time via our timekeeper. Me here as Stargardt will signal the candidates when there are thirty seconds left and when their time is up. Once the candidates have been made aware that their time is up, they may complete their sentences but must stop.
Thanks, Al.
Thanks, Al. I'm me here as Stargardt, I'll be timekeeping tonight. First off, each candidate will have two thirty-second chances that may be used to extend their response or respond to a question that they were not asked. But these cannot be used for rebuttal. Candidates must raise their hand and wait for me to approve their request before they start speaking. So like I said, at the time, I will also be raising the twenty-second flag when there's twenty seconds and the stop flag when your time is up. Thank you very much.
The final section will be closing statements of two minutes by each candidate, again predetermined by random drawing. On the final note, we ask the candidates to please not mention the names of students or other members while speaking to preserve confidentiality.
Now, we will begin opening statements. Again, each candidate has one minute. First, Jason Herman of Hariden.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jason Herman and first I'd like to thank the ISC and the students for putting this together. This is a wonderful event and we really appreciate you taking the time to do this. From a young age, I learned the importance of a school board. When I was in elementary school, my father ran for the local school board and was on the school board for over twenty years, six of which he was president. I saw firsthand the positive impact that he could have on a school district and its children and how there is always room to be better. I'm an experienced attorney who has dedicated over fourteen years of my career to public service. I was an assistant district attorney in the Bronx and Nassau County prosecuting violent and public corruption. I was a deputy counsel for New York City School Construction Authority where we built and renovated all of the schools in New York City. And for the past three years, I have worked as an in-house counsel, compliance counsel for a large international construction company. I would bring a wide range of valuable skills to the Lower Marion School Board and I would be an asset to the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah Cohen.
My name is Debbie Cohen, I'm running for school board. I have been involved with all schools, Penn Valley Elementary, Middle School, Hariden High School, for over fifteen years as a volunteer. I was part of the HSA, I was teaching music, I was part of the debate team, and so on and so forth. My kids are now grown and they are forty years old. So I have been away from the school system for ten years. I would love to thank you for being here and doing this for us and hopefully, we will learn a whole lot from each other today. Thank you.
Thank you, Abigail Rubin.
Hi, good evening, my name is Abigail Lerner Rubin. I go by Abby, but for the purposes of the election and the ballot, look for Abigail Lerner Rubin. I am a mother of four. I'm very passionate about education, obviously because I have four kids, but also because I care very much about their friends and neighbors, and our neighbors. I have a background in occupational therapy and also nonprofit management. I worked for some of the largest human service organizations in New York City managing their volunteer departments and those skills are always useful. I am very excited about the opportunities that exist in the school district. I have become fairly conversant in how things work here because I've gotten very involved in the full-day kindergarten efforts. If you've seen the marooned signs, that was me and my group. And through that, I got a little bit of an education of how it works and where opportunities are and I look forward to lifting my voice to the issues that exist here. So thank you for allowing us to be here tonight.
Thank you, Robin Gilbert.
Hello, I'm Robin Gilbert. Thank you to everybody who worked hard to make tonight happen. I'm a resident of Ballack Kinwood, member of various community groups, a wife, a mother of three boys. For many reasons, I believe I'd be a great asset to the Lower Marion School Board and the district as a whole. However, it's my role as a parent that is inspiring me to be here in front of you all, declaring my interest in running for this position. You see, I'm not very happy with our current school board and now that my children are enrolled in Lower Marion, I feel a need to take an active role in making positive changes for them and for all of the children. Matters of school safety, student well-being, and career preparedness and honoring the parent-child relationship weigh heavily on my heart and mind. Hopefully you'll learn more about my views. Oh, time to stop, thank you.
Thank you, Todd Ridke.
Thanks to the organizers for the invitation to participate tonight and for everyone in the audience for joining. So I and the rest of our slate, we see these meetings and forums in the campaign season really as the beginning of a collaborative engagement with the community that we look to maintain throughout the entirety of our tenure on the board. I'm a physician scientist. I've been on the faculty at the Penn School of Medicine for the past thirteen years after graduate training at Stanford. I've spent my entire career in academia, involved in patient care, basic science, translational research, and teaching at all levels. We have high school students in my lab during the summers and then a steady supply of graduate students, undergrads, and post-doctoral fellows in the lab. I'm pretty active in the cancer biology graduate program at Penn. My wife and I have enjoyed watching our two children progress through the schools. My daughter started at Gladwin, went to Welsh Valley, all the way through Hariden. Now she's a junior in college, you know, and that all happened in twelve years, you know. So in twelve years, you go from a second grader to a junior in college. Some of the days are long, but the years are really fast. And we currently have assigned at Blackrock. So between the two of them, we have eighteen years of collective experience. So I'm looking to share my experience as a parent and also as a lifelong academician on an informed and principal board that works collaboratively with the administration and our community.
Mr. Ridke, your time is up.
To ensure that we provide, you know, every student an opportunity to flourish. Thank you.
Thank you, Lea Martinez.
Hello, thank you for having me here. I'm sorry, it's on now. Thank you for having me here. I look forward to becoming a school board director. I am a resident of Penn Valley. I am an author, an entrepreneur, a mother, a wife, and a grandmother. I have a tremendous amount of experience in many areas of life. I did teach Sunday School in my younger years. I ran three very successful businesses. I have accounting skills. I have financial skills and I have the ability to put a team together to have a successful company and have a happy group of people working for me.
Thank you, Shayna Kalish.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Shayna Kalish and I'm running to be re-elected as school director. I live in Marion Station and have two children who attend Kinwood Elementary. I have an MS in Educational Psychology from Penn State and a BA in Cognitive Science from Lehigh University. I'm proud to have served the communities of Lower Marion and Norberth for the past four years. I was sworn in less than three months before COVID arrived in our community and my service to our district has been a whirlwind ever since. I've guided our schools through the COVID response, the murder of George Floyd and subsequent racial reckoning, the opening of Blackrock Middle School, the K-458 curriculum reimagining, the passage of healthy start times, and hiring two superintendents. My knowledge of LMSD and experience on its board has given me, excuse me, the expertise to serve this body capably and without any ramp-up. If I am re-elected, I will be the only board director to have served a full term. I'm excited to continue my service for another four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Gerald Perisi Jr.
Good evening, I'm Gerald Perisi Jr. Thank you to the debate teams and the ISC for setting this up. I live in Brimmar with my wife and two children, one of them school-aged. I'm an electrical engineer with a master's degree from Drexel University and I have fifteen years of experience in public utility space. I believe there's a lot of parallels between the public utility space and the school district administration. I'm uniquely qualified to balance the board and bring skills and problem-solving that have not been to the board yet. There have been plenty of academics and attorneys and counselors involved, but no real engineering problem-solvers. I have experience with things that pertain to the school district like union negotiations, construction projects, hiring and firing based on objective metrics. So I also think we need a balance in party on the board. So please vote for me, Gerald Perisi Jr., for school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah Thomas.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Thomas. I want to thank the ISC and all the host committees who have worked to put on this forum, as well as everyone in attendance tonight. As a resident of Wynwood and a mother of two young children, I am deeply invested in the school district and its future. But my dedication to quality public education runs deeper. As a school counselor in a public elementary school, I possess a comprehensive understanding of the inner workings of a school district. I work closely with my colleagues to support the students in my building and I am tasked with implementing district-wide initiatives. My daily work includes listening, collaborating, finding solutions, and problem-solving. If elected, I will utilize these skills to address the complex priorities facing our district. I respect the hard work of our school board members and am eager to start working alongside them in December. I look forward to continuing community conversations and working together to lead LMSD forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now begin the questions. Four candidates will respond to this question. Again, candidates may use one of their gadgets to answer the question they have not assigned or to extend the time on an answer. Our first question pertains to issues efforts regarding sensitive diversity, equity, and inclusion. The four candidates who will be answering this question are Jason Herman, Joe Perisi Jr., Lea Martinez, and Alon Gilbert. The first question. How do you plan on engaging with underrepresented communities in our district and ensuring their voices and concerns are heard throughout the school board's decision-making process?
First, Jason Herman.
So first, I'd like to note that I'm extremely involved and invested in the community. I'm a parent with two young daughters. One is at Lower Marion School and the other one is at a preschool. And I'm an active member of this community as a board member of the Kaiserman JCC, a soccer coach, a lunch helper, a class parent, participant in class trips, volunteer, and an adjunct faculty at Saint Joseph's University. As a school district, I think our top priority should be making sure that we're hiring the most qualified candidates for every role. And we need to commit to recruiting practices that prioritize diversity and engaging the community in our decision-making process. We should do so by broadening our searches. We should be doing so by engaging the community and speaking with them. As part of my time preparing for running for this position, I've had the opportunity to speak with civic associations as well as a whole host of other groups to get to know them and to find out what is really on their mind. So we want to make sure, I think, as part of our DE and I, that we're incorporating, including as many people in the process as possible.
Thank you, Gerald Perisi Jr.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Of course. How do you plan on engaging with underrepresented communities in our district and ensuring their voices and concerns are heard throughout the school board's decision-making process?
Thank you. So I was originally born and raised in Philadelphia, which is a little more diverse than Lower Marion and I think the main thing is you treat everyone the same. We are all humans and we all need to be treated the same with respect and dignity. Also, I think you need to connect personally and I think this has been a miss in the past where you need to have a forum for these community groups and all of the community to interact. I don't think three minutes, a hi and bye at the school board meeting is enough. So I think there's a lot of opportunity to change the approach to involving the community as a whole, both underrepresented and fully represented groups. And to treat everyone the same, give them the same opportunity in something like a town hall forum or some other format other than the current school board meetings, which obviously don't provide much transparency, which much of the community wants. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Lea Martinez.
I'm sorry, like we have in America where we choose congressmen and congresswomen to cover the various types of citizens who live in our country. I, of all candidates sitting here, have more diversity in my family than anyone else. We have Africans in our family, we have Mexicans, we have Americans, Jewish people, non-Jewish people. So I have a family that includes all individuals in the world. So I know about diversity. But suppose for a moment you were lying in a hospital bed with a critical illness in a strange town and you needed a specialized doctor. What would be your main concern? What would you find out first? And what would be important to you? Would you call around and ask someone to find you a doctor of a particular color, of a particular diverse race from you? A diverse gender? No, you wouldn't. You would demand that you get the best doctor in the hospital to take care of you because it's your life. This is how I feel about our teachers and our staff in the schools. I love these children and I want the best.
Ms. Martinez, your time is up.
Thank you, Robin Gilbert.
One of the big reasons why I feel called to become a school board director is because I feel very strongly about making sure that voices are heard, particularly those with underrepresented opinions and who are just generally underrepresented. You can find any category, okay? I do believe very strongly, as Jerry mentioned, that there's opportunity within a town hall format where we need to open ourselves up to the community and get input. There's valuable input that comes from different perspectives and we need to hear it and honor it and not just think that because we are leading the group, we get to make the decision without hearing everybody. And that's it.
Thank you. We will now begin the next round. Four candidates will answer this. Yes, would you like to introduce your question?
Yes, please. I want to reiterate that supporting our students and families that do not have the same advantages as others. Equity is really the focus that we need to put for our students. You wouldn't ask for a certain person, but when not everybody starts at the same place, it's not the same race that everybody is running. We need to acknowledge that everybody deserves an ample chance regardless of their race, ethnicity, religion, or sexual orientation.
Thank you.
Now we will begin the next round. Four candidates will answer this question. This next question relates to how can a school approach sustainability? The four candidates will be answering this question are Todd Ridke, Shayna Kalish, Abigail Rubin, and Joe Perisi Jr. Our next question is, how would you best move our school district to a more sustainable, greener future?
I'm sorry.
How would you best move our school district towards a more sustainable, greener future?
First, Todd Ridke.
So we have a tremendous opportunity in our township through the schools to lead by example. You know, we've built wonderful new facilities that are energy-efficient and we should tout that and we should use that as models for other development that goes on in our township. And we should incorporate environmentalism and sustainability and conservation into our curriculum as it already is. We have classes in oceanography, we have classes in biology. We should encourage students to participate in that and obviously we have a tremendous opportunity to lead by example with the Oakwell property, right? We have a choice to make regarding that special piece of land. And you know, it's my own view, I think shared by many, that we should come up within our community for the smart way of using that to preserve the land. Have that, we should be stewards of that land, use it responsibly, minimize our environmental impact, and leave the land a little better than we found it, right? So those are the guiding principles that I think we should follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Shayna Kalish.
Thank you so much. I want to say that I feel really lucky to live in Lower Marion where the district has incorporated sustainability into our curriculum and to our operations. Also, our township is currently going through their sustainability initiative, which will be coming out shortly and I'm eager to partner with them as a district. I know firsthand that we've taken a lot of environmental precautions. I served on our facilities committee, which means I get to see firsthand the development and building of our new Blackrock Middle School, which is an outstanding facility. We've done things like have really sophisticated lighting and HVAC controls that turn on and off and regulate themselves based on the usage in the building to maintain as low a level of energy usage in a large building as possible. But I think it's kind of funny, perhaps what is the biggest environmental impact that I can see in our district has is in busing. We have a lot of buses. It's a required state function that if we bus any student that does not have an IEP, we must bus any student that wants it. And so effective bus routing is really key and we've just approved some new software for that. And my hope is to, on the horizon, convert our district to electric busing. It is not soon, it is not a potentiality that can happen this year, but our biggest carbon footprint in the district of busing and going electric would have a massive energy impact and reduce our noise and air pollution within the township.
Thank you, Abigail Rubin.
Thank you for this question. So one thing that strikes me when I think about sustainability is that when I was growing up, I grew up in New Jersey, so don't hold that against me, but I grew up in a district very similar to Lower Marion, very, very similar, called West Windsor Plainsboro. And when we learned about recycling, it was always a retroactive kind of behavior. And now we're talking about sustainability as something proactive. We can be proactive and we should be. And I think that's something very important to consider, that this is also a mental shift. So of course, as Todd mentioned and Shayna mentioned, you know, we need to kind of leverage the curriculum that we already have and really champion the kind of sustainability programs and environmentalism that we do champion already and kind of continue with those. But also, you know, we do lead by, we do lead by example. We need to change our behavior. I think one thing that would be great is if we could be a little bit more collaborative with the township and I, while I agree that we should definitely use fewer buses or be more fuel-efficient with our buses, it would be great to use fewer buses and have increased, you know, bike lanes and better sidewalks to encourage people to be outside. Mental health is such a huge kind of buzzword and issue and student mental health specifically, being outside, you know, it just can't hurt. And I would love to be able to really champion that both through educational kind of goals, but also just through behavior. So I think one thing that we can do to be more sustainable is to be proactive and to work collaboratively with the township to really help benefit the students and the community at large.
Thank you, Joe Perisi Jr.
Thank you. So I think it's important to mention that the Oakwell debacle has been completely by the current board and past Democrat boards and I think Republican balance would really help in this area. Every tree that's been knocked down for schools and fields has been by the current party in power. So I think it's important to add that diversity of thought to the board to challenge on decisions that are made. I think we should sell Oakwell if we can. It's a great green area for the township and the cost of maintaining that, I don't believe, should be on the school tax and the citizens paying the school tax. I also think there should be more use of Oakwell and other parks in the area. There's little to no trips to parks that I've seen. There's little to no trips to parks that I've seen, and I think there could be field trips to more sustainable areas to teach the students about the value of the green space and the sustainability. Also, we have a very environmentally conscious citizenry here. The community is very environmentally conscious, so I think giving tax money back and stop raising taxes on the citizens will give money to environmentally conscious folks to make sustainable decisions. I do want to say there's been a decent job so far with this with the district. I love the waterless urinals in the bathroom. I think that's a very sustainable touch. And as an engineer, I can continue to provide smart investments like that for the district. Thank you.
We will now move on to question three. The topic of this round will reference the world's technology implementation in the district. The four candidates who will be answering this question are Sarah Thomas, Lea Martinez, Jason Herman, and Deborah Cohen. The question around the week is that any student or parent feels though they have too much screen time in the classroom, inside and outside of the classroom. As a board member, what are your thoughts on working with administration to pass policies about screen time? First, Sarah Thomas.
Thank you for the question. I agree. I think there's plenty of research available on the effects of too much screen time, especially on our youngest learners, and that those learners especially need to have more time for physical activity, peer interactions, and less time in front of their screens. While I appreciate the current off-and-away policy, and I think that that's a step in the right direction, I believe that there is more that we can do to encourage responsible use of technology and decreasing the use of technology, especially at the elementary level. I would love to see students interacting more personally with one another instead of through devices throughout their day. And I think relying on devices has put a burden on our students and our families and community, and that we need to take a bit of a step back and, you know, really have those face-to-face personal interactions more often than we currently are. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, Lea Martinez. Yes. Many students and parents feel as though kids are spending too much time on screens inside and outside of the classroom. As a board member, what are your thoughts on working with administration to pass policies about screen time?
I agree. I agree that students and adults have too much screen time. The question is what to do about it. One answer is drop it and leave it. When you come to school, you take your phone and you give it to the principal's office, and you don't have the use of it until school is over. That's a major way to stop the screen time. It's a major way to get your mind in sync that you don't need to look at the screen all day. This would increase actual reading of books, of the knowledge that you're learning in school, and it would develop your mind to read and to think and to be a part of what you're learning. We also can bring back cursive writing, because what people don't understand about the science of cursive, which is script, is that when you're writing cursive or script with your right hand, it exercises your brain on the left side, and it actually develops your personality and your character. And we're missing this when we don't teach it to the students.
Thank you. Jason Herman.
So, I think it's our job to make sure that our children are prepared for every career that they, when they graduate, when it comes to technology. But there needs to be smart, appropriate technology policies, and there needs to be a balance. An example that comes to mind is my daughter received a computer in her second grade class, and it was her first computer, and as you can imagine, she was super excited, extremely excited about bringing it home and using it, but it's an integral part of her learning in school, and she doesn't need it for homework. So, at parent-teacher conferences, the teacher mentioned that there was an option to bring the computer home. We asked the teacher, who in this instance was the expert, whether or not it was necessary to bring it home. And besides the weight of the computer, obviously, it would be a distraction at home, it would increase the students' screen time, and obviously, our role as parents would be more complicated and difficult if she was on the computer at all different times. So, the teacher said, no, it wasn't a necessity. And there it was. There was a simple example where a teacher and the administration came together, and they recognized the importance of technology in the classroom, but created a smart technology policy that benefited the children and parents, obviously, where there was this limitation. So, we need to continue to strike these types of balances in every day when it involves technology and cell phones.
I will--
Deborah Cohen, you get the question. So, thank you so much, and next, Deborah Cohen.
You know, the kids are spending too much time, screen time, looking at the screen all day long. I think that really detracts from them being able to talk to each other, to have communication with each other. You know, if they don't do that, maybe they would learn how to advocate for themselves. Maybe the curriculum should be a little bit more engaging so that they have these conversations instead of looking at the screens constantly. Not doing that, I think, would bring a lot more issues to the table for them, which they can be discussing and they can be debating, other than just looking at the screen and getting the information from that. I'm not saying not look at the screen at all times, but it has to be limited so that they have time to think, and they have time to talk to each other, and to be able to advocate for themselves. So, that's my--
Thank you.
And then Joel Periz Jr., please.
Thank you. So, this is something I'm passionate about. I think off-and-away is a great policy. I just don't understand what took so long to implement it. And this goes back to the efficiency that I can provide. I think once we have a good idea like that, we need to execute for our students. Also, it's a contrast to the sustainability question we just got. No doubt, the screen time is increasing because we're looking to reduce paper usage and things like that. But I think if anyone's ever seen Dreambox, I don't think it's the greatest tool to use for homework, and we spend tens of thousands of dollars on that. I think we need to bring back a little bit of paper to balance the education with the students and reduce the screen time. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to question four. This next question focuses on how the school board will work to ensure student success across the district. The four candidates who will be answering this question are Jason Herman, Deborah Cohen, Abigail Rubin, and Robin Gilbert. The question is, Lower Marion School District's national rankings have been falling in recent years. In light of this, what policies can you enact to improve both student outcomes and well-being in our school district? First--
Jason Herman.
Seems like every question I get asked. We need to provide, I think, more resources to our children. I think that the big policy is full-day kindergarten, so our children can learn and develop socially and emotionally. I think we need to hire also more full-time counselors for our schools. Our counselors need to develop relationships with our students, have regular check-ins with them. We also need to create safe spaces for our children. And last, I think we need to provide resources to our parents so that they can effectively communicate and work with our children if the children's have issues at home. I think we live in a-- we're fortunate to live in a district that is regarded as one of the best school districts in Pennsylvania, even though the rankings have changed up and down. But I think we need to continue our excellence in education, and this includes preparing our students with all different types of skills, hard skills, which are, you know, technical skills, preparing them for the future. But I think also equally important is to make sure that we develop soft skills such as leadership, communication, creativity, emotional intelligence, time management, and social development to be successful in life.
Thank you.
Next, Deborah Cohen.
Yes. Can you repeat the question?
Of course. So, Lower Marion School District's national rankings have been falling in recent years. In light of this, what policies can you enact to improve both student outcomes and well-being in our school district?
Well, I would actually take that back to curriculum. I think the curriculum should be changed. If we are to prepare those kids to be, to go to college and be successful, and possibly leaders of the future, it is not possible that they do not know which continent they live in. And it is possible to teach them history, geography, so that they are able to really talk about it wisely. And if we are thinking about those children being our leaders in the future without those things, they have absolutely no chance. So, I think it all comes to the curriculum, the support that they can get from the teachers, and the fact that it has to be much more engaging so that they would love doing what they're doing, and I don't see it happening right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Abigail Rubin.
Thank you for this question. I think when it comes to student success, one of the things that we really need to foster a little bit more is what we'll call the specials. I have kids in elementary school, so we still call them specials. Art, music, even gym, I think we need to consider that when students are using their full bodies, their full minds, they're able to focus better. There's actually data to show that when people are more physically active, they're able to focus better, they're able to do better. And I think we need to really consider that when we talk about student success, when you exist in a culture that is so, so, so high-pressured, what does success mean? I grew up, as I said, in a similar district, and it was very, very stressful. And I like to kind of joke that, you know, I got into college, my SAT scores were fine, but the spread between my math and verbal was such that when I got to college, my advisor asked me if I would be okay taking Algebra I again. And I had taken Algebra I many times. And I did, and guess what? I got a C, because the professor said, I get that you understand this, but I also get that this is not your strength. The point is, that I'm trying to make, is success cannot be measured by specific rankings all the time, and I really think we need to bring back holistic understanding of how people can be successful, from the youngest all the way to the oldest. And I do also want to stress that something like full-day kindergarten, which will help to, you know, give everyone a kind of a standard start, is so important, because when you have a good foundation, you can build a strong education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Finally, Robin Gilbert.
Okay, so-- I actually am a teacher back in a past life, and so I think I have ideas, right, from my own experience on what would make things better for the children or teenagers. But, you know, I can't be too proud to say that somebody else may know better than me. So, what I would say is, let's take a step back, let's look at what's changed. You know, when did the numbers start falling? What's changed in our environment? What's changed in our policies? What's changed in our curriculum? And then who are the experts? Who can we talk to? Whose voices can we hear? This goes back to the whole idea of honoring different diverse opinions and thoughts. Let's go back to people who actually have something meaningful to add and hear what they have to say about how we can make it better. And that also includes the kids, by the way. And, you know, I think much can be done, and it comes in community and partnership.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving to question five. This round will discuss the possibility of restricted materials and content in district schools.
Four candidates will be answering this question are Todd Riedke, Shayne Kailish, Sarah Thomas, and Abigail Rubin. The question is, across the nation, school districts and officials have banned books related to topics such as, but not limited to, race, historical themes, gender, and sexual orientation. What is your stance with regard to what material, if any, should be banned or regulated within our schools? First, Todd Riedke.
Yeah, you don't want the school directors to get into this, right? The choice of specific teaching materials, this should be driven primarily by the teachers, the program chairs, the content experts, guided by the academic standards adopted by the State Department of Education. You should be very leery of any school board who wishes to insert themselves heavily in curricular and pedagogical decisions like this. Nothing good comes from that. This is when your school board meetings end up on the news, this is when the TV cameras come in, and this is when there's protesters in the parking lot. I have no interest in taking the school in that direction. We want our children to have a wide diversity and range of learning opportunities and materials so they can develop critical thinking and lifelong learning skills, and it is not the place of the school directors to thought much of managing that.
Thank you.
Next, Shayne Kailish.
Thank you. Freedom of speech includes freedom of the press, and I believe to have intelligent, curious, and critical-thinking students, we cannot be reducing their access to written materials or any materials, because goodness knows we do plenty of our reading online these days. Banning books is what fascists do, and to quell alternative philosophies and frank--
But that is not my personal stance. I will not support reenacting history to a false narrative. I participated in the Indigenous Peoples' Day presentation at Black Rock Middle School, where I reiterated that in their public interview. I will ensure that curricular and library materials reflect a diverse population, and in fact, I have, in terms of approving certain purchases of library materials. Students connect with what they read when they see themselves reflected in that material. That includes age-appropriate discussions of wrongs committed in our country. That includes books with main characters that represent people of color, indigenous people, disabled people, queer and trans people, and members of different ethnicities and religions. One of my priorities as school director is student voice, and I will not limit the materials they have access to in order to quell that voice. I think that that is a really important thing, that our students deserve that right of self-discovery and learn-- like, I am a book person, so I want our kids to have access to read all sorts of different things, to be exposed to different perspectives, and to actually decide where they come down on different arenas, and that is exactly what they should be learning in school. Thank you.
Next, Sarah Thomas.
Thank you. I'd like to echo and agree with the statements made by the other candidates that are on my slate. I too agree that our district should be upholding academic freedom. We should not be banning educational materials for any of our students. Rather, we should be using a variety of materials, right, not limiting what our students have access to. It's important for our district to create opportunities for students to explore diverse perspectives and ideas, and this is something that helps develop critical thinking skills, which is a skill that's very important for our students to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Abigail Rubin.
Thank you. I, at the risk of sounding redundant, I'm going to agree with what my slate co-candidate, the people that are on my slate said. I also just want to mention that I'm a card-carrying member of the Kurt Vonnegut Memorial Library, and if I said that any book was, you know, inappropriate, they would take my card away. I think it's really important that we are allowed to think for ourselves and read things and discuss things that we don't agree with. Sometimes we surprise ourselves when we read something we don't expect to like, and we find things that kind of reflect our own experiences, and it helps us to become more empathetic, more understanding, and better citizens of the world.
Thank you. We will now move to question six. This round discusses the current funding received by school activities. The four candidates will answer this question are Shayne Kailish, Robin Gilbert, Joel Periz Jr., and Lea Martinez. The question is, there's been controversy at high schools in LM about changing the balance of provisions for clubs and athletics, with athletics often receiving much more school funding than other activities. If elected, how do you seek to mitigate this issue, and do you believe changes should be made in the funding structures? First, Shayne-- First, Shayna Kalish.
Okay, so the question, I'm sorry, it was hard to hear you. It's about the balance of funding between clubs versus sports?
Yes, would you seek to change the funding structure by emphasizing on that more money's spent on athletics than on, as opposed to activities?
So, time spent outside of our classroom really enriches the school experience for all of our students. A diversity of extracurriculars serves a well-rounded student and a well-rounded student body. So, I really think that sports and clubs both really serve to create school community and camaraderie, but I think that equity of funding for extracurriculars is key. Equity does not mean that each group is going to get the same amount of funding. Some activities are more costly than others, but one activity's monetary requirement should not come at the cost of other clubs, sports, or activities. I think that really needs to be something that's balanced out, and I don't think that one, I don't think that one activity should come to the detriment of another. I think it's important that we support clubs and sports that are very welcoming to students, that have pathways for things that don't necessarily have a tryout, or if they do, that have means of inclusion for all students, a variety of abilities and inclinations to certain activities. And I also know that as part of our current pay evaluation structure, that the board is planning to, and I'm involved in this, reevaluating the pay structure for staff and coach, staff and club, excuse me, staff, coaches, and club advisors, so that all club and sport expenses can be more predictable in the budgeting process. Once we know where that money is coming from and going to, if we have extra funds there, we can divert it to other clubs that are shown to be needing more funding to support their activities.
All right, thank you. Robin Gilbert?
So, I was actually in the art club and the drama club, and I lived this whole, oh, I see the football team getting more money scenario. But I have to say that it's probably important to take a holistic look and see, you know, where the student interest lies. If the schools, if it benefits a school in some way, either financially or, you know, with school spirit, whatever the case may be, then maybe that does get more resources, but we need to look at the reason why. Nothing should be, you know, removed from, there should be no offering removed because, you know, everybody deserves a chance to follow their passion and what they're interested in. And, you know, it's maybe take a look at what other school districts are spending, look at historical spend, and just, you know, take a look at what the benchmarks are, what is the normal amount of money to spend per, per interest, per club, per sport, and if it means we have to shake things up a little, that's fine, you know, maybe, maybe we do need to change spending here and there. But I think taking a good look at where the interest lies and will kind of help to solve that problem.
Thank you. Gerald Perez Jr.?
Thank you. I agree with everything Robin had said. I'll just expand a little more on it. I think it is important to, again, get some empirical data and benchmark against what other schools spend on similar activities. I think we need to be efficient with our spending. I also think there's probably a lot of fundraising going on already by the students, but what a better opportunity, what better opportunity is there to teach leadership and skills, soft skills that the kids could learn through a fundraising effort, finding mentors to support different clubs and activities? We could create new clubs and activities. I'm sure every kid has different interests. And when you find something that a child is passionate about like that, I think it's the perfect opportunity to, you know, show them that they can be a leader, they can make a difference, and implement something like that. I also want to mention that I noticed in the school board meetings, this really became a much hotter topic after the Oakwell issue because people realized how much money is being spent on fields. And I think in general, that more diversity of thought on the board would help avoid these greater issues that, as you can see, mushroom into and branch out to all these avenues that cause nothing but problems and distractions for the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Lea Martinez?
Reality issue. When you have a sports event, most of the school comes and watches and participates, and it's a major weekend rally. When you have a club that, a music club, or any other art, or any other club that you have in the schools, you don't see outsiders coming in to watch and enjoy time over the week, on the weekend, to listen to their music or any other club that they have. The reality is, everyone loves sports, that's why it's on TV, and that's why everyone comes because they're enjoying it and they're getting a benefit out of it. I think it's just a natural thing that happens. If it's exciting to watch a game, you're going to get people to go to the game, but you can't force people to participate in a club. And I don't see where those, where those clubs complain. Do the students complain that they don't have enough funds to enjoy what they're doing or create other interesting things for their club? Are they complaining? Do they complain that they don't have an instrument? And that's what I'd like to know. What?
Ms. Martinez, your time is up. Thank you.
The question in this round relates to the specific priorities of individual candidates. The candidates answering this question will be Jason Herman, Deborah Cohen, Abigail Rubin, and Gerald Perez Jr. The question is, especially in recent years, there are many different opinions on the role of the school board, and the role of the school board ought to be playing in the education of their students. What are your top three priorities if elected? First, Jason Herman.
So I would say the top three would be, first, creating a safe and nurturing school community where every student is valued, respected, and empowered to achieve success. I would say the second would be to implement full-day kindergarten. Currently, only families with financial means or ones that do not, but sacrifice other needs can send their children to a private school or attend a full-day kindergarten program. A half-day kindergarten also makes it more difficult for students to be diagnosed with learning disabilities and other speech delays. This places the student at a disadvantage educationally. The student must work much harder to catch their peers, and in some cases, they never do. Full-day kindergarten still has not been approved by the board, and a full-day kindergarten program would level the playing field and provide all students, regardless of their socioeconomic level, with the opportunity to receive a full-day education. Third would be community involvement. Countless parents and students that I've spoken to have said that the current board doesn't listen or represent them. I have already reached out to commissioners, civic associations, parents of all ages and geographic locations, students, taxpayers, and committee members to develop relationships and further understand the needs of the community. And I plan to continue this, open communication, if I'm elected to the board.
Thank you. Deborah Cohen?
Well, there's a lot of things that the school board is supposed to be doing that I'm not sure they're doing. One is transparency to all the students and their parents. Kindergarten, as he said, yeah, should be probably for a whole day to support the families that need that kind of support. Starting time for students in middle school and high school. These kids sleep four hours a night, four or five hours a night. They get up at six o'clock in the morning, and they are not home until four or five, and if they have extracurricular stuff, probably even later. Between homework and between trying to have some family time, which I think is very important, these kids don't sleep and get up the next morning being half asleep for the first three, four hours of the day. So, this is something that they have to do. And of course, provide safety for the school. I walked today in here, doors open, no people looking, the place was deserted, and all the doors were open. Safety for all the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Abigail Rubin?
Thank you. So, I would say that my three priorities as a school board member are maintaining and improving upon access to education for all students across the district, across the kind of student lifespan from kindergarten up. I think this is one of those opportunities where often we want to look and sort of make sure that we're doing what other districts are doing, we want to be kind of on par. This is an opportunity to surpass what other districts do and be even more inclusive and be more proactive in anticipating what might need to be, you know, kind of thought about and included when we think about access. You know, as an occupational therapist, it's very important to me that we provide, that we're mandated to provide a fair education to all students, so access is really, really important, and access also to extracurriculars. I also feel pretty strongly about collaboration. I think one thing that the board is kind of intended to do is be a body of community. So, I want to be able to collaborate with the township, with the parents, with teachers, with everybody who is a stakeholder in education, and I think that we can certainly improve on the collaboration. And the last priority, I would say, is safety and also just a healthy culture in the school district. I think it's up to us to lead by example, provide guidance to our students into how to live a healthy life, how to be engaged in your own education and advocate for yourself. And I feel really strongly that it's our role to do that, and we need to keep their safety and.
Ms. Rubin, your time is up.
Thank you. Gerald Perez Jr.?
Yes, so my top priority, I would say, is taxes. I would like to advocate not just for the, you know, the parents with students, but also all the taxpayers in the community. The recent tax refund that was given back to the citizens was because the taxes were being illegally increased, and I think we can be efficient enough without having a negative impact on the students and not raise taxes just for one year. We have the highest cost per student in the county and close to being the highest in the state, and when you're dropping in rankings, that's just not sustainable. And that's exactly what I saw in Philadelphia as a student in public school there. They kept throwing money at a problem, and it wasn't working. So, we need to be more efficient, and we need to have someone on the board to challenge some of the investments and spending we're doing. The second one is transparency. I think, like I said before, the school board meetings do not provide any transparency, especially if you try to dig into the finances. They rattle things off without actually showing the spreadsheets, and then when you go to the spreadsheets, they don't have the level of detail you need to actually analyze. I also think that would help reduce litigation costs, especially around special ed, so transparency is important. The last thing is fun. We made national news last year for canceling a Halloween parade, and I understand why, but I don't think that's a good way to go, that they reference safety with unvetted parents, yet we have, you know, an open door here and parents attending events all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. In this round, we will return to the discussion of DEI initiatives in the district. We thank the Beckton Scholars for their help in drafting this question. The candidates answering this question will be Deborah Cohen, Shayna Kalish, Sarah Thomas, and Todd Ridkey. The question is, as the school population grows increasingly diverse, LMSD has committed itself to cultivating a learning environment such that students value themselves and the diversity of others. In hiring and for the students, how do you envision promoting a diverse and inclusive environment? First, Deborah Cohen.
Could you repeat the question? I can't understand a word of what you're saying.
Oh, yes. The question was, in hiring and for the students, how do you envision promoting a diverse and inclusive environment?
I'm sorry, I can't.
How do you intend on?
I think as my colleagues said before, a diverse environment is an important thing for, for the school system to have. How does one do it? Providing actually the same education to everybody. Everybody is equal, no matter, no matter what, where they come from or who they are. They should get the education that they need. So, any, any diverse population that you have here is going to be attended for their needs by the school system, whether it's people who have disabilities, people who are coming from a lesser educational background. Any of that should be given to them equally to every person that comes through Lower Marion School System. This is what our taxes are for, and this is why we do have the money to do that, and it should be spent wisely to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Shayna Kalish?
Thank you. So, the key in hiring is to hire the best candidate from the widest, most diverse pool of candidates. So, my focus would be on expanding our pool of potential candidates for roles in the district. All of our children will benefit from having a diversity of staff, no one is suffering, and children of color experience the most benefit, which will go towards our goal as a district of closing the achievement gap for Black and Latino students. I, we, as a district, and my part in that, we've been successful in hiring diverse administrators. Dr. Khalid Mumeen, who was then tapped as the PA Secretary of Education, Ms. Shawana James Coles, who is the new DEI Director, a position that I voted to create. She also has helping, helping increase diversity of hiring as part of her duties, and the two most recent principals in our district are people of color. Our strategies for hiring admins, I would really want, for hiring more diverse staff, I'd really want to talk to those admins and tap their expertise. I'd also love to see a mentorship program for students of color in our district where we encourage them to go out, get that education degree, and guarantee them an interview if they want to come back and teach with us in our district. Also, I want to point out that the board has revamped our hiring practices so that we've repositioned our questions and our evaluation rubrics for hiring across the district to be perceived through an equity lens, including racial equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Thomas?
Thank you. I would like to say that we are always looking for the best and most qualified candidates to be hired for positions in our school district. That being said, I think that we should aim for a staff that mirrors the diversity in our population, in our community, and in our students. And one way that we can do that is by diversifying our recruitment practices. We should be looking to try and get a wider pool of applicants, posting jobs in a variety of places and templates so that we are recruiting from a larger pool than we currently are in order to gain a larger pool of applicants. We are a desirable school district. We typically have many applicants for our positions, but I think that there's always room for improvement, especially in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Ridkey?
Yeah, I agree with all that was just said, and this goes towards building and nurturing a community that promotes cultural humility, right? And how do we do that? We need our children to understand the nature and impact of their worldview and their part in it. And we have a fairly, there's diversity within our population, but, I mean, not tremendous amount, right? So, in anticipation of this question, I double-checked with my children. So, my daughter went through all levels of the schools, and my son is now halfway through, and between the two of them, they have had one Black teacher total. There was a high school, or a middle school history teacher at Welsh Valley that my daughter had once. That is the only exposure to a Black teacher that either of my children have had in their entirety of their time here. So, there is tremendous opportunity to improve that. I mean, we're talking about diversity. I mean, we're talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts here. And, you know, we have 8% Black students in Lower Marion. I don't think any of them are here in this room tonight. And so it's a little funny to have a group of white people pontificating to another group of white people about how to improve, you know, the Black experience. We need to get people together through improved community engagement. This was brought up earlier, and I completely echo all those sentiments, particularly with regard to the hiring. Thank you.
Thank you.
This next question focuses on district efforts to ensure widespread accessibility. The four candidates who will be answering this question are Robin Gilbert, Gerald Peresi Jr., Abigail Rubin, and Jason Herman. The question is, how would you work to ensure that students and their families are supported in accessing programs provided to students with special needs and/or impairments? First, Robin Gilbert.
Well, that's a big, important question. And yes, all children have a right to a fair, a good education to whatever their peers are receiving. I thank God, I'm fortunate enough not to have personally dealt with the special education structures. However, I have friends who have, and I've heard stories that actually break my heart where, you know, children need something and they come up against a wall each time the families are trying to fight for it. And then there's legal teams involved. And, you know, that just seems so inefficient to me. I, from my opinion, and I would like to see this in number form, I believe I would be correct in saying that, give them what they need. It's going to be cheaper anyway than hiring a lawyer to cover your butt at the end. I think that whatever can be done to ensure that everybody feels safe, accommodated, gets what they need when they enter the school building, needs to be done and it can be done efficiently, with the right power behind it.
Thank you. Next, Gerald Peresi Jr.
Thank you. So I wish I could pass this to one of the other candidates here. There's two on our slate who actually had to use the legal process to get what they needed in special education here in Lower Marion. And I just want to echo what Robin alluded to, that there shouldn't be lawsuits. When someone has an IEP and someone has special needs, the district really should have an if-this, then-that approach. I don't expect the district to be able to, there's such a wide plethora of disabilities out there and needs for different students, that I don't expect the district to be able to accommodate all of those in-house. But why add the legal cost on top to ultimately get where the law takes us anyway? It's law that we have to provide the provisions for every kid to have a free, fair, public education. And it doesn't sound like the district's doing that from the anecdotal personal stories I've heard. I too have a child with special needs, not yet in school age, so I'm passionate about this and I'm dreading having to deal with the district about it, honestly. So I think we need to, again, be efficient with it, know our limits, and avoid litigation to provide what every child needs to learn. Thank you.
Just a quick reminder, candidates can raise their hand and add an additional 30 seconds to their response or respond to a question that they have not been answered or asked by them.
Thank you. Next, Abigail Rubin. Okay, next, Abigail Rubin.
Can you just repeat the question, just so I make sure I hear it?
The question is, how would you work to ensure that students and their families are supported in accessing programs provided to students with special needs and/or impairments?
Thank you. Okay. So I think one of the main issues when it comes to accessing these programs and also utilizing IEPs is that the process is very nebulous. And for people who have never been through it and who are not providers of certain services, it's extremely stressful and overwhelming. And I think one of the things that we can do really comes back to collaboration. We want to collaborate with families and parents and teachers and the admin. It shouldn't be people, you know, constantly feeling as though, on either side, that no one's listening. So I think one thing we can do, and I actually want to give credit to Sarah Thomas about this, we've talked about this, and her experience as a guidance counselor informed this idea, is, you know, create an opportunity for parents who have gone through this process to sort of serve as support to families that are new to the process. I think a lot of what comes to pass when it comes to dealing with this kind of news is it's a lot of uncertainty. And hearing from someone who has been through it, maybe had a similar or different experience but had kind of walked a path, really helps to make you feel that you're not alone and that you're not doing this by yourself. And, you know, ultimately, we all have the same goal, which is to make sure that students are educated to their, with a, excuse me, a free and appropriate education, a public education. And in order to fulfill that mandate, we need to make sure that parents and families and staff feel that they're doing this in partnership, because that's the only way to benefit the student.
Thank you. Next, Jason Herman.
So I agree with what Abby had said. I think that there needs to be a more collaborative partnership between the school district and parents. I think that partnership would lead to a more personalized dialogue about each child's individual needs and how the school district can meet those specific needs. It will also provide the parents with a direct line of communication to the school district administrators to work through any types of challenges that show up. We should also ensure that the teachers also have the resources and the tools necessary to implement any of the recommendations that the school district puts forward. I think the school district should also provide adequate IEPs. The school district, as echoed before, I think, would save money in the long run by providing the specific students' needs as opposed to engaging in litigation. And I think at the end of the day, we need to ensure that all students, including those with diverse learning needs, receive an exceptional education in Lower Marion.
Thank you. Next, Shayna Kalish.
Thank you. Briefly, I just wanted to acknowledge that LMSD has had a history of difficult IEP processes for some of our families, and that has gone on too long. It's something I'm aware of in my position. And I've already started working with Dr. Yanni on assessing and restructuring this process. That was part of his interview process and one of the reasons why I voted to hire him. I think the goals of our new IEP process should be around students getting what they need for success in school. That's where that equity lens comes in. Each student gets what they need, which sometimes will be above and beyond faith, and to create a less adversarial, more collaborative IEP-
Ms. Kalish, your time is up.
I was finishing my sentence. Can I finish my sentence? A more collaborative IEP process for staff and families with less litigation.
Thank you. This round turns to district responses to growth in the district. The four candidates who will be answering this question are Deborah Cohen, Todd Ridkey, Lea Martinez, and Sarah Thomas. The question is, as the enrollment in our schools continues to grow, how do you propose to accommodate the increasing student population? First, Deborah Cohen. As the enrollment in our schools continues to grow, how do you propose to accommodate the increasing student population?
Well, I think the increasing in population that was given to us this year was totally inflated. You seem to have about 6,200 students right now. The numbers that we were given were over 7,000 students. So in order to be able to accommodate all these kids that are supposed to be coming in, I don't know when, but in order to do that, I guess we have to actually make more schools, build more schools for them. There are, right now, most of the schools have been redone to accommodate a large, larger number of students. So when that issue comes along, I guess we're going to have to rethink it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Todd Ridkey.
What you do is you follow the data. So you look at the best possible projections, you look at your capacity to serve the population, and you make adjustments as needed. I mean, there was a time when we had 10,000 students in this district, so we can clearly do it, and if we need to do it, we'll do it again. The major unknown thing is exactly how many new students are going to come when we start full-day kindergarten. It's probably on the order of 500, but it could be more, it could be fewer. So we'll plan for that. You know, we are really fortunate here, guys. We are in like the richest financial school district in the state. There's 500 school districts in Pennsylvania, and we invest more per child than nearly any other school district. So we have tremendous capacity to teach, the students are eager to learn, and I'm confident that with judicious and thoughtful planning, we can serve the students as we need to.
Thank you. Next, Lea Martinez.
If we actually had 10,000 students before, I think we could accommodate the extra students that are coming in. But one of the ways you can do this is starting school at different times. Some students can start an hour earlier, some students start an hour later. So you can move the classrooms around to accommodate everyone. I don't know how many new students we have, I don't know what the capacity of this school is. So I wouldn't be able to answer the question based on what the reality is at this school district.
Thank you. Next, Sarah Thomas.
Thank you. As our enrollment grows, I think we need to ensure that we are planning for the future and that we are being proactive, rather than coming up with temporary solutions such as the modulars that were in place until recently in some of our elementary school buildings. I think it's very important for us to be receiving reliable data on our enrollment projections. The district had a study done last year. The numbers seemed to be a bit off. That enrollment study is being redone this year. I invite you all to attend the November Business Board Meeting, and there will be a presentation from MCPC with the results of their new enrollment study. So if you're interested in learning about enrollment increases or potential decreases in the coming years, I'd invite you all, encourage everyone, to attend the November Business Board Meeting, which I believe is on November 20th at 8:00 PM, right across in the Administration Building. But I think that overall, we really need to be proactive in looking at those numbers. You know, BlackRock is a solution for now. You know, creating a third middle school is a solution currently. But it was a reactive solution to schools that we knew were already overcrowded. So going forward in the future, I'd like to see us be more proactive and planning for an increased population if that is what the data shows. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move on to our last question, which will afford candidates an opportunity to reflect on this forum. Unlike other rounds, five candidates will respond to this question. The candidates responding to this question will be Shayna Kalish, Robin Gilbert, Lea Martinez, Sarah Thomas, and Todd Ridkey. The question is, what question would you like to have been asked, but that you were not, and what would your answer have been? First, Shayna Kalish.
This is really tricky, because I feel like I could do 20 minutes on a lot of really obscure board topics that nobody really wants to hear about. But I think what I've been really interested about, what I've been talking with my fellow board members with, what I've been talking about with Dr. Yanni, is what our priorities for advocacy should be at our state governmental level. We're looking at things like consistency of funding for things like our mental health supports and increased funding for our special education students. So we hired three wellness counselors and several other supports through the ESAR funding, which was COVID funding. We want to keep those people in there, but we don't know where that money would come from, from the state. The state provides less than 10% of our budget each year, and we really need to look at that. There are things like requirements where the state has a requirement that every student be weighed at the elementary level. And that, when we're talking about mental health, is really counterintuitive to things like preventing eating disorders. I know that that is, that starts younger than we want to believe, and that requiring a student to self-advocate as a young child to not have to do that is not fair. Another thing that I would really like to advocate for as a district is fair funding. That was one in court, and how we're going to actually put that forward. We are a very fortunate district. We live across the street from Philadelphia. Our district touches Philadelphia, and they need our support in fair funding.
Thank you. Next, Robin Gilbert.
There were quite a few topics I probably felt I could have weighed in on. There was one that is kind of maybe strange, but I think of interest to all the younger people in the district. And that is AI and ChatGPT. So it creeps me out, but I am seeing it as an opportunity for learning. I know that many educators are probably a bit afraid that it opens up a very beautiful and attractive window for cheating. And I would say, you know, maybe as, Lower Marion's cheating policy is kind of low on the list right now, so maybe we just need to take another look at the languaging around that and make it particular to artificial intelligence and all these cool tools that are coming up. And really take a look at it and think, you know, this is the reality for the younger generations, and it's probably pretty cool and pretty attractive. So maybe, maybe it can be incorporated into the lessons and it kind of goes back to curriculum and keeping kids interesting, interested. So maybe teachers can teach children, give children exercises where they can critically evaluate what results they're getting, pick out biases, et cetera. Maybe there's electives that are added, so children can learn how to use the technology appropriately.
Thank you. Next, Lea Martinez.
The reason why I'm running for the School Board Director is about the curriculum. My main concern is student success. Student success is the reason why I'm running for the school board. That's what I care about the most. We need a curriculum that teaches our children hard learning. We must teach our children hard learning and hard sports. Enrich the mind and the body of each student. They must work hard to form habits of hard work. Additionally, our curriculum should include almost daily quizzes for long-term retention. The mind works before it tells you what to do. The longer the first quiz test is delayed, the more they forget. Better to quiz an overabundance than an overabundance of homework. We work hard during the week and we have fun on the weekends. That's what makes a happy life. It makes us look forward to every day. Additionally, I think that having debates is very important for the students, because it intertwines the learning with the actual action of life. And that makes a student understand their learning and keep it for a longer time.
Thank you. Sarah Thomas?
Thank you. I think that there are a wide variety of topics that were covered by the questions that were asked tonight. The question that I would like to add is, how do you see yourself working together with the entire board to make positive changes and improvements in our district? And my response to that would be that my daily job includes collaborating with others. Every single day, when I go into my school, I'm listening to students, I'm listening to staff, I'm listening to parents, I'm working to find solutions, I'm problem-solving day in and day out. As a slate, my co-slate meets and I have been working together over the past, you know, few months. We know each other's styles, you know, we understand how to work with one another. We have a really good current working relationship, and I look forward to building upon that. We have a really good current working relationship, and I look forward to building upon that, starting in December. And I think that it's really important that you have a feel for those that you are working with, and you know how to be able to collaborate and to work well with one another. Just a real quick update, the Phillies won 10 to 2.
Thank you. And finally is Todd Ridkey.
All right, so I think you asked me what question I wish I had been asked, right? So I wish somebody had asked me, what can the board do to help us, meaning you guys, learn to think creatively? And what the board can do there is to fully embrace and support a truly liberal arts education. This is mentioned in the Comprehensive Plan for the District, but only very vaguely, right? You guys are gonna go to college, and whatever, whatever college you're gonna go to, it's gonna have, or university, it's gonna have a College of Arts and Sciences, right? So why does a College of Arts and Sciences exist? Like you don't, you know, when they were putting the, the structures together, it didn't say, okay, we need to put the musicians somewhere. Oh, we'll just put them with the chemists, right, because it's convenient. It wasn't because of convenience, it was purposeful, because there's educational synergy between that. So what can the board really do? We are looking forward to being in the opportunity business for you, okay? The best thing we can do is create a wide range of diversity and interest and avenues for you to explore, where you can develop your critical thinking. And there's, you have this special window now where you can try out new things that are so much harder to do when you're 40 and 50. So we want to give all those opportunities to you guys now, and that's one of our most critical jobs.
Thank you.
Thank you to all our candidates. We will now move on to one-minute closing statements delivered by each candidate in the order they are seated. So up first, Jason Harmon.
Sorry, just to clarify, we were told that they were two-minute closing statements.
Oh, sorry, two-minute closing statements, my apologies.
So first, I want to thank you again for organizing this event. I just want to reiterate that I have extensive experience in education. During my tenure at the New York City School Construction Authority, we had a fi, a $4 billion annual budget a year to build and renovate the schools. And I routinely reviewed policies and procedures to make sure they were more effective and efficient, and examined budgets and programs to make sure they were achieving their desired success, and there was no waste or abuse. I'm also involved in higher education as an adjunct faculty member that teaches ethics at St. Joseph's University and a member of the Board of the Kaiserman JCC, where among other things, we discuss matters involving preschool and education. I have experience reviewing and analyzing financial reports and documents when I was at the District Attorney's Office. I'm a FINRA arbitrator and a certified ethics and compliance professional. I'm a proud product of a public education, so I understand and appreciate the importance and value of a public education. I'm also extremely involved and invested in this community as a father of two young daughters, one of which is at a Lower Merion School, the other one's a nursery school. I routinely volunteer in their schools. I understand the importance of engaging the community. I regularly attend School Board Meetings. I am familiar with the school district's policies and procedures and issues that are currently facing the district. In addition, as I mentioned before, I've already reached out to commissioners and civic associations, parents of all ages, geographic locations, students, taxpayers, and committee members, and other members of the community to develop relationships and further, further understand the needs of the community. These skills and my passion for public education would make me an asset to our board and the school district. And therefore, I ask for your support and your vote on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Deborah Cohen.
Well, there are a lot of things that we talked about tonight here. And one of the things that I would like to see the, is more transparency from the School Board. I'd like them to look very much into the curriculum and make sure that our wonderful students here are getting all they can get so that they are successful in college. The idea of getting to college and not being able to support yourself there because it's either too difficult, you do not have the correct, you know, background. And so to me, it sounds, sounds terrible that this is one of the most expensive school districts where we spend the most money in Pennsylvania for, to educate you. And I do want to see results. I want to see the results of that. I want to see you guys going and being extremely successful and far and beyond other kids that come from other school districts. You're lucky, you have the resources, some, some others don't. Take advantage of it. So I would like really the School Board to provide a proper curriculum so that they can teach you how to think when you go. I also would like to talk about, a little bit about parental control. I think the School Board lacks, and the policies for parental control. So that would be an issue I want them to take care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Abigail Rubin.
Thank you. I first, I just want to say thank you very much to the students for all the work you've put into this. It's clear that you took this very seriously, and we appreciate that. So my closing sort of statement will be that I don't know all the answers, and I'm the first one to tell you that. I do have some great background and experience and skills, but I'm here to learn. And I'm here to help kind of move conversations forward as opposed to let them languish with sort of, you know, unnecessary pontification. I want to make sure that we can move forward and get to solutions so that students get the education they need. And our community can be as wonderful as it is. We moved here for the same reason that many people did, for the district. And, you know, I want to be able to make sure that the education that everyone receives is as quality as it should be. And yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Up next, Robin Gilbert.
So we can understand and see that there are so many intricacies and decisions of all sorts around being a School Board Director. I think that these issues can all be addressed fairly and successfully by putting the most competent minds together. That being said, I believe that all voices count, and I'm passionate about making time and holding space for people who wish to speak, even those with opposing opinions. Listen to the parents. People with different backgrounds and experiences are definitely welcome, and transparency is key. I work well with others, and I really look forward to being a part of a collaborative effort, a collaborative effort to ensure that our students have the safe, you know, they have the best of everything. They have their safety, they have their well-being, and they are successful and ready to just take on the future.
Thank you. Up next, Todd Ridkey.
Well, thanks, everyone, for the discussion tonight. I'm running to serve on the Board because I'm a big believer in the public schools. Want to make sure that the schools run well and that the community that we live in continues to hold the schools in the highest regard and continues to recognize the tremendous value of our collective investment. Tonight, we talked a lot about supporting the children, the parents, engaging and supporting community interests, working with the administration, and all that's obviously critical. But I come from a family of schoolteachers. Both my parents were teachers, my grandfather was a teacher, my brother's a high school English teacher right now. And what we didn't talk about tonight is how we can support our teachers, right? This whole enterprise is built around the teachers. We want our teachers in this school district to be excited to teach. If the teachers show up and they're not excited to be there, you guys see right through that, and it's, it's a wasted opportunity, right? So how do we keep our teachers excited to be in the classroom with you? That is a priority, and that is a major job of the Board of Directors, right? So one of the things we can do is to keep things interesting for them is to promote professional development in a way that they can then learn things that they bring back and share with you guys. So for example, my brother in Connecticut, the school district paid for him this past summer to spend a week at Walden Pond. The wanted Walden Pond, you know, the row, right? Spent a week at the pond, saw the cabin, they had directed readings, they learned about the history. They learned about what Ralph Waldo Emerson had to do with it. And then he brings back activities that he can then use in his class this year that he's excited about, right? So if he puts in a little more effort, right, and then sees the students responding to that, that only encourages Brad, my brother, you know, to work a little harder. And it's the Board's job to potentiate that feed-forward cycle, right? And I look forward to doing that for you guys.
Thank you. Up next, Lea Martinez.
I am running for School Board Director to increase student knowledge and student success, to create an environment of joy, and to create a joy for learning. Education and knowledge is the only thing in the world that can lift someone from the very bottom and rise to the very top. We will build our strength to engage and inspire our students to be the very best that they can be, to revitalize their minds and their bodies for a healthy, quality life. By creating new, new paths, we will fuel creativity and innovation. But remember, education is the only thing that can take, bring a person that's on the very bottom and rise them to the very top. So the key point here is the best education that you can give a child that will give them the best adult life. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Shayna Kalish.
Thank you to our organizers and our student moderators for having me tonight for this discussion. Again, my name is Shayna Kalish, and I'm a current School Director seeking reelection for, to the Lower Merion School Board. I spent the last four years in service to our district and our community, and they've certainly been a jam-packed four years. I'm proud to have voted to change our bell schedule to reflect the sleep needs of our high school students. I'm beyond thrilled at the progress of the Full-Day Kindergarten Initiative, and I'm dedicated to navigating the challenges to implementation and see it in place for our kindergarten families next fall. Going forward, it is my aspiration to continue closing the loop on large projects facing the district and reimagining processes that are not working as we'd like them to, such as the IEP process. We've covered a lot of ground here tonight, and I know many of you recognize me from the more structured format of the School Board Meetings. So I wanted to take a minute to break that rigidity a touch and talk to you about why I do this job and why I hope to continue. For all the things that running an organization the size of LMSD entails, my priority, first and foremost, is our students. I care about kids, about the quality of the education they receive in their classrooms, the belonging they feel in their schools, and the success they achieve based on what they need and want for themselves. I care that our kids are receiving a diversity of educational materials, hearing a diversity of voices and learning from a diversity of educators. I care that the kids of all ability and disability can feel a part of their class and their school and have access to the tools they need to take advantage of the opportunities before them. I care about their voice. I want LMSD to be a place where kids can be themselves, free of judgment or reprisal. That is the perspective with which I serve you and will hopefully serve you for this next term. Thank you all for your time, for your consideration, and for your vote.
Thank you. Up next, Gerald Prese Jr.
Thank you. So I'm running for School Board because I really feel I have skills that will help. I think it's timely that we have a different type of professional on the Board. With the, the ranking issues, the state ruling on the equality of funding, I think we need someone different that can look at efficiency and work to reduce the, the tax burden on the citizens. I think full-day kindergarten is a great idea, but I'm concerned about how it will be implemented. And I, I think the record of the current Board shows the risk versus reward here. I'm an engineer, I know probability, I know the probability of us flipping the Board. And I understand the risk of one Republican on the Board. Imagine the accountability and the benefits of that. If you could just get one diverse person on the Board to be a whistleblower, be an advocate for those who don't feel heard, and to bring a different perspective and help solve the problems on the Board. I think I heard a lot of great ideas tonight, a lot I look forward to working with both sides on. But I feel that they're really not guaranteed. The, the Board today votes in lockstep every time. And a simple shift in the winds of any kind of challenge, I don't see it coming to fruition. I think we need someone to push through and challenge, do things a little faster. You know, I don't know why it took so long for full-day kindergarten. We have the highest cost per student. Every other school comparable to us in size and cost per student already has full-day kindergarten. So also the mention of working with special ed issues, that's happening now, finally. Why did it take so long? These are all issues that I think adding a Republican on the Board would really help with. Please vote for me, Gerald Prese Jr. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Sarah Thomas.
I would once again like to thank the student moderators, the ISC, and all of the host committees who have worked to put on this forum, as well as all of you who are in attendance. Since deciding to run for School Board, I've had many opportunities to speak with community members about our school district. Our district is widely regarded as one of the best in the area and the state, but there is always room for improvement. My desire to serve in this important role stems from my passion for education and supporting all students to be successful throughout their school journey. As a school counselor, I support students, staff, and parents on a daily basis. As a parent to two young children just starting their educational journeys, the success of our district and its students is of the utmost importance to me. Having attended all monthly Business Board Meetings over the past two years and countless committee meetings as well, I have a good understanding of the complex priorities currently facing our district. I am knowledgeable about the district's current efforts on important issues such as healthy school start times, universal full-day kindergarten, and field space for the BlackRock Middle School athletes. I am excited for the opportunity to join our current Board members to continue some of the great work that our district is doing and to look for areas of improvement. Our community is extremely important to our district. I will strive to find ways for more community conversations and involvement so that all members of our community feel a sense of belonging within our school district as we work together to lead LMSD forward. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to all of our candidates.
Thank you. Thank you all for joining us. I think we all feel better informed about the candidates and their platforms. And thank you so much to the student moderators, to the Timekeeper, and for the live streaming format, those that put that on for us. We encourage you to remind your friends, your neighbors, your relatives to check their registration at vote.p-a.gov. The last day to register to vote is October 23rd, and make a plan to vote, whether in person or by mail, and learn about the candidates at vote411.org. The deadline to apply to vote by mail is October 23rd also. On behalf of the organization and cosponsors, we want to remind you to vote on November 7th. Your vote, it's your vote, and it matters. Good night, and thank you all again for coming, and thank the monaries, thank the candidates. Thank you.